Good evening. This is a meeting of the Townsfolk Committee July 19th, 2021. The noted requirements provided for in the Open Public Meetings Act have been satisfied. Notice that this meeting was properly given by transmission to the Star Ledger, the Independent, and the two of your times, and by posting at the Middletown Township in this whole building, and filing with the township clerk on January 7th, 2021. Benjamin Clark.
Here.
Benjamin Sanambrino.
Here.
Many women see now.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Hybel.
Here.
Mayor Perry.
Here.
Please press for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic which stands on its nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence under the troops serving worldwide, defending our constitutions, freedoms, and way of life. Thank you. First and foremost, tonight's agenda, we have the administration of over the office. At this time, I'd like to invite Officer Robert J. Hayden. Please come forward with your family.
Hayden, it's your last name.
It is Hayden.
You're first. I, Robert J. Hayden.
I, Robert J. Hayden.
Do solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
The governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God. Congratulations.
Sorry.
That's fine. 393. What's current? 250.
Keep your location private.
Okay.
Your dad here?
Okay.
Yeah, he's uh right there next to my wife.
Alright.
He's close to my father.
Good luck. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And we have a lot of championship athletes waiting, so we'll keep it too long. But Officer Hayden is a former New York City corrections officer. He's a graduate of Thomas Edison State University. He'll be attending the Monmouth County Police Academy August. So I'm very happy to have him join our ranks. Congratulations. Most importantly, he's a veteran of the city service.
At this time, I'd like to invite Brian A. Bruno to please come forward with your family.
I, Ryan A. Brunon.
I, Ryan A. Brunon.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
Same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority.
And I do swear.
I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
Justly perform.
All of the duties. Of police officer.
Of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help you God.
Congratulations.
At this time, I'd like to invite Shane and Garrett, please come forward. With your family.
They can go right down there. Hey, tonight's a historic night, very special occasion. Brian is actually the first third generation Middletown police officer to my knowledge. His father was a detective sergeant. Mike Chaffrey is my grandfather, Captain Joe Chaffrey. Actually did my background in the police. Brian has been serving as a Class II Special Police Officer for five years. He's a member of the Air Force Reserve and he'll be attending a nine-day waiver class. Very happy to have him.
I, Shane M. Hassler.
I, Shane M. Hassler.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
The Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith. And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same. And to the governments established in the United States.
Governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people. And I do swear.
I do swear.
To faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of police officer. According to the best of my ability.
To my ability.
So help you God.
So help you God.
Congratulations.
Right, Officer Hassler is a graduate of Elizabeth Town College in Pennsylvania. We played baseball, Division III. He graduated the Ocean County Police Academy. We graduated first academic English class, first with a physical fitness award, and first with a department. So he's currently was employed as a North Platteville Police Officer. He'll start with us tomorrow, and I'm very excited to have him join us. So congratulations. Thank you.
At this time, I'd like to call John J. Mania. Please come forward.
I, John J. Mania.
I, John J. Mania.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
Allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
Faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Officer Mania has been employed with the Long Ranch Police Department as a dispatcher and a Class II Special Police Officer. Grew up in Middletown, went through the Middletown Public School System, was a volunteer firefighter, I believe, for nine years at River Plaza Fire Company. Currently a firefighter in Jackson Township. He's going to be attending the Monmouth County Police Academy. So congratulations.
At this time, I'd like to invite Dominic S. Libery to please come forward.
I, Dominic S. Litter.
I, Dominic S. Libery.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
And I will bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And to the governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Officer Libery was a dispatcher for the Bramis Police Department, a public safety officer for Fairleigh Dickinson University, currently employed as a Hudson County Sheriff's Officer. He's going to be going on a field training officer program starting this month. So very happy to have you. Congratulations.
At this time, I'd like to invite Sean P. McDonald. Please come forward with your family.
I, Sean P. McDonald.
I, Sean P. McDonald.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And that I will bear true faith.
Bear true faith.
And allegiance.
And allegiance.
To the same.
To the same.
And to the governments established in the United States.
The governments established in the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And I do swear.
And I do swear.
To faithfully.
To faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly perform.
And justly perform.
All of the duties.
All of the duties.
Of police officer.
Of police officer.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help you God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Defense key, bailing. Yeah.
Sean is a second-generation police officer, fellow officer with Dad Keith. Have the pleasure of working with. Dad ran many relations, their program, our police explore program for years. From the Brian, who's an outstanding officer. And Sean is a graduate of Middletown North, Montclair State University, worked for the Monmouth Police Department, was currently employed, so yesterday would be the Howland Police Department. He's a drug addiction expert, and he's honored every year by Mother's Guide, Strapped Rodent. Very happy to be excited to have him. All right, briefly, I want to thank the mayor and the committee for allowing us to fill these vacancies. The past several years have been a very challenging time in law enforcement, and approving interested candidates has become difficult for many agencies. Last year, the number of 1,200 applicants that took to Monmouth County law enforcement and for example, this year, that number has dropped by 75%. Unfortunately, people are reluctant, and much less inclined to clear some law enforcement. So many agencies have had lower standards when it comes to approval selection. That is not the case in Middletown. We are very fortunate to be able to hire these six outstanding and highly qualified candidates, which left other law enforcement agencies to cooperate. Want to welcome each of them toward a board, and ensure that they're going to receive the very best training, equipment, and leadership policy and system that we have. Would also like to thank them for their courage and commitment to support and defend our constitution and protect and serve our community with the help of Texas. The six members of Middletown's partners, the deputy chiefs, myself, and the other ten.
Thank you.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
John, just got a sucky. Everyone, we're going to take a quick two-minute recess, allow any more pictures to be taken. We have some championship sports league that we're going to be honoring as well. So we're going to take a quick two-minute recess, alright? Thank you all very much.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to invite the Monmouth United Soccer Club Riptide Team for winning the 14U NJYS 2021 Challenge Cup. Please come forward with your head coach, Sean Field, and assisting coaches.
All right, and that was the easiest lineup I've ever seen. I've seen a lot of them up here, and that was really great. Well, first of all, team, congratulations. Raise that trophy up. Raise that. Now, fortunately, as opposed to Tampa Bay Lake, this trophy is still intact during his celebration, right?
Exactly.
I mean, hasn't it taken any spills or any tumbles recently? Well, first of all, I just want to say, congratulations to the entire Monmouth United Team. What an incredible victory. Unbelievable to be able to bring this trophy home, that amazing medal right there, and be able to celebrate with this town. We've been fortunate, as you're going to come to realize, the theme of tonight has been one, first, six police officers, and now all the incredible sports victories that Middletown has had over the last few months. But I just first want to start off by saying how honored I am that you were able to come in here. I want you to come back next year with a new trophy. And don't spill that one, don't dent it up, don't do anything like that. Bring the next one back, and we can have them lined up, and we'll have a little Patriot S. type action going on. So we line up all these. But, you know, one thing that I want everyone to realize, and you're all, you know, young ladies that are demonstrating, you know, your commitment not only to yourselves but to the sport, an important sport, a sport in which this town has put a lot of investment and time into enhancing. Because you drive around the state of New Jersey, you see the facilities that, you know, are all over the state, and Middletown wanted to be one of those destinations where you can go and have an incredible facility, incredible fields, and work it, and bring home those championships. So on behalf of the entire Township Committee, congratulations. Way to show the state of New Jersey and the 14U girls' champions. You guys rock. Congratulations.
I have certificates, obviously, for all of you, but I just want to read one out loud. The Township of Middletown congratulates the Monmouth United Soccer Club Riptide players on winning the 14U NJYS 2021 Challenge Cup for the first time in Monmouth United Soccer Club's history. We're so proud of your hard work towards earning this athletic achievement, and support you in reaching your goals, both on and off the field. Congratulations.
Now, we need to get one pick of the trophy down, and then one with the trophy raised up in the air, alright?
Family, ready?
Here or not?
Two, three. And now one for the trophy.
Give it to him.
No, no.
You've been challenged. They're like, yeah, I'm going to eat it. You're a tough guy. Alright, congratulations.
Recognizing Middletown North Girls Track and Field Teams, NJSIA, 4-2-3, state sectional championship. I would like to invite you to come forward with your head coaches, Brock Celestry and Ray Tombe, along with assistant coaches and team to join the mayor in front of the ground.
Well, congratulations. What an incredible victory, right? An incredible season that all of you have had, representing Middletown North in such an incredible way, and really. incredible way, and really bringing it back home, right? Like I said, tonight's all about the victories that we all had. We all know there's always those hard times, those times where there's a little bit of a stumble, but you all persevered, you all pulled through, and you were all made able to make an incredible championship year, and a year in which I know you won't forget, your coaches won't forget, and a year in which you made Middletown and the Middletown North community in particular very, very proud. So I want to congratulate all of you for an incredible season, an incredible effort. And on behalf of the township committee, we want to congratulate the Middletown High School of North Girls Track and Field on winning the NJSIAA North Two Group, North Two Group Three State Sectional Championships. Wow. For the third time in your school's history, we're so proud of your avid athleticism and look forward to seeing what future, what your future holds. We're confident that you'll continue to overcome any hurdles. Any hurdles in your way and chase your dreams. Ladies, congratulations. Keep making Middletown proud. You got a number. I know you have a school board president, Joe Minnies, and a vice president, Frank Capone, a board member, Jack Tobacco, people who are incredibly proud of you and people who, all they want to see is you succeed, not only on the track, in your athletics, but also in the classroom, and we look forward to your leadership in both of those over these many years. Congratulations. Couldn't have done this, no problem. That's a good one.
Well, you didn't ask it.
Yeah.
At this time, we have a presentation recognizing Middletown South Baseball Team NJSIAA Group Four State Championship. I would like to invite head coach Chris Lamore, assistant coaches, trainer, and team to join the mayor in front of the room.
The kids really like to wear the mode. All right, well, first of all, I'm glad they all got the memo and wearing the same shirt from today. It's very well done, Coach, excellent job. Today, now, we get to honor Middletown South, and these five of the men right here who made catch, talking about catching, your publicist must be unbelievable, because you were having articles, they're articles, I'm like, holy cow, these guys are just, every day they're playing like three games, you know, you're winning so often. But I want to congratulate all of you, right? Basically, my favorite sport, a sport, you know, that it's a true team effort, a sport that has to be done, where you're all thinking the same, understanding the situation that you find yourselves in, and I always believe that baseball translated to life, because there's always going to be times where you're looking at the field, understanding what is going to come next, what's that next pitch going to do? What's that slider going to look like? And all of you have demonstrated your commitment, not as a single individual on the lineup, but as a team, which is most important, supporting each other, understanding that next pitch, and being there to succeed and to bring home that championship to Middletown South and to Middletown as a township. So, congratulations. So, I have certificates for all of you. The township of Middletown congratulates Middletown High School South Eagles Baseball Player on winning NJSIAA Group Four State Championship for the second time in your school's history. We are so proud of you for earning this outstanding athletic accomplishment and bringing the title home after two decades. We're rooting for you from the sidelines and hope you continue swinging into success. So, on behalf of the entire township committee, congratulations, those moving on, best of luck. I just wrote you, Scott, down signing all your graduation letter letters. For those of you going to join us again next year, I look forward to sitting in that dugout as a coach offer, and don't worry, I'll be shouting if you're gloving in the dirt. No, no, don't worry about it. You ain't running, you're going to hear from me. Congratulations, you earned it. Thanks for representing Middletown and making this township and your school proud. Congratulations. Congratulations. Side up, side up, let me get over here. Seasons are fun, but man, it is nice to win. So, congratulations to all of you. We're going to take a quick two-minute recess. Congratulations. Thank you, thank you, thank you, thank you all the parents, thank you all the coaches. Great job, everybody.
Our next item, we have the approval of minutes from March 15, 2021 regular meeting, April 5, 2021 workshop meeting, April 19, 2021 regular meeting, May 3, 2021 workshop meeting, May 17, 2021 regular meeting, June 7, 2021 workshop meeting, and June 21, 2021 regular meeting.
Motion to approve minutes, second.
Minnie Van Clark.
Yes.
Minnie Van Center Brede.
Yes.
Commander Ms. Now.
Yes.
Stephanie Bayard High Bell.
Yes.
Mayor Parrot.
Yes.
Motion to approve minutes. At this time, we have a public hearing of proposed ordinances. Our ordinance, mainly of 2021-3312, and ordinance amending chapter 540 of the Code of the Township of Middletown for committing the operation of any class of cannabis business within the jurisdiction of the township of Middletown.
Okay, any member of the public wishing to make a public comment on public ordinance number 2021-3312? I'll start within the room and then I'll move over to the, to those joining us via WebEx. Yes, sir? You come right up to the microphone up here, state your name and address for the record, okay? Just right up to that microphone.
Joey, we understand that the committee is against the dispensaries for marijuana stores, we support that particular position. We feel that with the state of New Jersey being the most densely populated state in the country, that the possibility that there will be many more traffic accidents is very likely. I was just reading Colorado and South Dakota, which I'm sure is not as densely populated, are having problems, or Colorado was having problems with this particular situation. Traffic accidents have just gone up. So I would imagine the problem would be worse here. So that's why we believe that, and plus it's really good to have easy access for younger people to get this stuff, because they will get it, as you know. And we think that just make it harder, even though they will still get it, at least perhaps, you know, it will slow it down.
All right, thank you very much for your comments, sir. Thank you. Yes.
I live at 914. I am opposed to the ordinance. I would like to see Middletown embrace the new law that has been voted on by the people of this state. I believe now marijuana access should be equal to access of liquor stores. I do understand that we may want to have these stores not near schools and other kinds of restrictions, but not a five-year moratorium on having these doors. It's a loss of revenue, and people will go to other cities to acquire their marijuana. So I would like to see people not driving so far, and in this town be able to have access to it.
Well, just one clarification, and we just make a thank you very much for your comments, is that this is not a five-year ban. It's actually the opposite. If we were to not act prior to the August 21 deadline, we would be locked in to whatever regulations come down from the Cannabis Regulatory Commission. We would be locked into that. At any point, any municipality that opts out of the, of this marijuana legislation that was passed by the legislature, that allows you to get back in at any time. So only if you, only if you do not act, are you locked in to a five-year moratorium.
Thank you for that clarification. I didn't have all that detailed information, but I also know it takes a long time to get rid of an ordinance once it's been established. So I-
Same amount of time that it takes to establish an ordinance, it takes to remove an ordinance.
All right, so you and I disagree.
Two meetings, I mean, it's two meetings of the governing body.
Right, and that the governing body agrees. So I say, no, don't do this. Let's be a leader in the state and have these dispensaries in our town, because they're going to be in towns around us, even though I know Hometown is looking at the same thing. I think it's important to realize that the citizens of this state have decided that marijuana should be decriminalized, so now let's make it, let's, let us have access and let us put it on par with liquor, which is also-
Well, it's not, though.
I get that it's not, but I'm telling you what I think that it should be, and the dispensaries should be available.
No, what I'm, what I'm saying is, for the longest time, we kept hearing that let's govern it like we do alcohol. And in no way, shape, or form did the legislation that was passed by the legislature and then signed by the governor govern it like alcohol. So the comparison to say, well, let's do it like we do alcohol, is not accurate in the sense that it is not governed like alcohol, okay? Licenses are not determined by population, they're determined by the governing body. Background checks are not done by the police department and the chief of police, they're done by the state. So we can, we can continue to say that let's do it like alcohol. Well, if that was the case, then why didn't the legislature pass it like alcohol and govern it like alcohol? I understand your point and I fully respect your opinion and your comments, but at the same time, you have to, if you're going to compare the two, then let's put the two on equal playing fields, rather than saying, well, let's do it like that. The Cannabis Regulatory Commission has not issued one announcement or press release since March 24th, not one. Municipalities by law are being told that they have to make a decision by August 21st or they are dictated for a five-year term where they cannot make any types of changes. So we are taking this step to ensure that we're doing everything we can, because at this point, not a single one of the 565 municipalities anywhere in the state of New Jersey, whether they are controlled by Republicans or whether they are controlled by Democrats, it doesn't matter, because both of them are doing the same thing. Many of them are banning it because there is absolutely no regulations, and we wouldn't pass zoning, doing it the way the state of New Jersey is doing, because there's no information out there. There's not one shred of information, and it is, the reason municipalities are opting out is because of the lack of information. You can go and read any article from any municipality that is banning this, the sale, growing, or manufacturing of this product, and every single mayor and governing body has said the same thing. The state of New Jersey passed this, and I fully respect the vote that was taken. But at the same time, the enabling legislation that was then put into place does not give any type of insight or any type of guidance to the 565 municipalities, nor, for that matter, the 21 counties that encompass the state. So I fully respect your opinion, but I have to disagree in the sense that there's information out there and we just need to accept it. That's simply not the case. That's that's simply not the case.
It's clear that you all have already made
I'm not speaking on behalf, I'm not speaking on behalf of these members, I'm speaking on behalf of myself.
You have made your opinion, but this is public feedback and I have heard your arguments before and I hear them tonight and I still think that we should have these dispensaries open in Middletown and not institute a ban of them at this time.
I will, thank you very much for your comments and respect all of your position, thank you.
Hello, I'm the board of the town of Weston, Brandyly, New York. Thank you, members of the township committee, as always, for the service to the public. I also agree that we shouldn't ban them, I would be rather happy to have these dispensaries here. But now, what you said, Mayor Perry, is this a question of so that we can have more local control over it? So you're saying you're opting out, but you can opt in at any time, but you want we want our town to have the control as opposed to unknown dictates from the state.
Absolutely, one hundred percent. If the state said, let's put a power plant and we're going to force everyone to have a power plant, okay? Just as an example, but I'm not going to give you any of the zoning or any of the information on who gets a license, how they get a license, what jurisdiction the township has. That's like going like this and saying, okay, well, just put it wherever you want, I guess, you know? There has to be some type of, you know, on the Cannabis Regulatory Commission's website, if you go there, they have a little infographic and it says, we're going to take public testimony and then we're going to engage with the municipalities and then we're going to come up with regulations and then we're going to release those regulations. Well, never once has the Cannabis Regulatory Commission ever engaged local officials as the infographic says. Not saying that they won't, but, you know, they have it to this day. And basically, next month, you, five hundred and sixty-five towns have to take a position on this. Whether they do or don't is fully up to them. But the point has to be made that you need to have some type of local control, just like you do alcohol. So if we want to compare it to that, the town has a lot of controls over who works in the liquor store, right? You're required to get a background check, you're required to get fingerprinted, you're required to go through a background check with the chief of police. You know, so these are all things that are important, that are just at this point up in the air.
I was wanting to change my mind. I mean, I'm in fear of dispensaries, but I feel also that we need to have, you can't do it blindly because you never know what this thing is going to say or do.
Absolutely.
I think it's smart to not do it and then you're saying, but you can do it. You don't have to wait five years.
Yeah, by not acting or locking yourself out.
Okay, all right, great, so we're doing something that we have a choice to go in.
Absolutely.
Once we're satisfied with the regulations in the town, which makes a hundred percent.
Which you need to get your planning board to say it's in compliance with your master plan. You need to get you need to get more community input from your own residents. You need to understand how it's going to fit into redevelopment plans that are happening currently on Route thirty-six. There are factors that are easy for somebody in Trenton to just have a green, red, or yellow button and to push it. There's a lot more thought and time and energy that has to go into it from a local municipality's perspective and it's just irresponsible to not take that time, to take the time.
So thank you for clarifying that, thank you for explaining that, that makes complete sense to me. I'm just, I was only looking at it from a sort of revenue standpoint and another business that can come into town. I don't use marijuana or any other kind of drugs, so I don't like to talk in that fight. I was just, you guys are so good with managing the municipal tasks and having keeping that portion of our tax bill, you know, under control, thank you for that. So I was looking at it from more from that perspective.
Totally understandable.
Freedom perspective, I don't think it's the state or anybody's business or anybody about anything like that. But I'm very happy the way you're going about it and very responsible of all things, so thank you.
Thank you very much, Sharon. Actually, Mr. Nelson's going.
I just want, I think a couple of points that are important from the legal perspective is that the, you know, and especially with respect to Alcohol Beverage Control Commission has thousands of pages of regulations. They have a manual known as the A B C manual that dictates how licenses are issued and how facilities are operated. We have nothing like from the Cannabis Regulatory Commission. So it's really, you just can't use that analogy because we have regulations in place from the A B C as the mayor has set forth. Also, the state is not yet issuing these recreational licenses, so to speak. So the fear that somehow the municipality is going to lose out on revenue, even if other surrounding communities may be authorizing licenses in certain zones, really isn't going to come to fruition because the state hasn't even said when it's issuing these licenses. The state's not even issued any new medical licenses in recent months or in the last year or so even, I think maybe in excess of a year. So the concerns about, that I often hear expressed that, well, if we don't, you know, if the municipality doesn't act now to do something, then, you know, the municipality is going to miss the boat or lose revenue or something. It's just not correct because the state's not issuing these licenses at the state level yet either. So, you know, all the municipalities should be on equal footing by the time that the regulations come out and then those local determinations can be made in an educated way when we know what is or isn't preempted because we could sit here, we could adopt ordinances, establish our own regulations, and then the state comes out with its regulations preempting all of them. So it's a complete waste of time. And we can't, under the law, do anything that the state doesn't specifically authorize as a municipality. So I don't know how the municipalities that are supposedly authorizing these licenses and zoning for them are doing so without knowing what the state is or isn't going to preempt them on. And in all likelihood, whatever regulations they adopt locally, you're going to have to all be redone anyhow, so.
Thanks, please. No problem, Brian. Just name and address for the record.
Yes, for tonight's record, my name is Greta Swiwc. I'm from the Idaho Beach community of North Middletown, one twenty-five Seabreeze Avenue. I'm a proud resident of the Idaho Beach community of North Middletown and as I am specifically at tonight's meeting to express my thanks to the governing body concerning ordinance two thousand twenty one dash three, three, one, two, to prohibit the operation of cannabis business in the township of Middletown expressly. Thank you for your continued commitment to the quality of life of Middletown residents. Really appreciate it. I am not just speaking for myself, I'm speaking for many people in the community in which I live. So multiply me, okay? The negative effects of recreational marijuana cannabis businesses to communities across the country are well documented yet are pushed aside by the cannabis industry and its culture in lieu of favorable statistics that have nothing to do with the quality of life. Quality of life should always outweigh financial considerations. To those municipalities across the country who have allowed recreational marijuana and retailers into their communities and expound the financial benefits of allowing it, they are really just advertising their own leadership failures to curb increasing taxes on residents, failure to shut down corruption, and their overall failure and mismanagement of government in general. There is absolutely no denying the negative effects to a community that allows recreational marijuana retailers. Attraction to homelessness, people, panhandlers, degradation of parks and open space, litter, estrangement of public services, inappropriate public behavior, luminous, and other nefarious activities. These hot areas become a no-go zone for families and the public in general as they become overrun by the culture. It is a shame and it is a disgrace. So keeping it short, I end by again saying thank you. Thank you for putting the majority of Middletown residents who support this ordinance first. We are the majority in Middletown. We are not a collection of loud, clammy gongs, ready to pressure, belittle, intimidate, and disrespect their fellow citizens, but rather reasonable people who care about the community we call homes. Thank you again.
Thank you.
All right, for the record, I'm Ray Green, I live over at forty-one, already in North Middletown. Just want to go over some stuff. You guys are right, the state's been dragging their feet on getting these things all lined up. But a lot of the stuff that you're talking about and that's in the packet itself is a little misleading. No matter what the state says for a lot of stuff, the town, even if we did not, would still have the ability to govern the number of cannabis establishments, the number of distributors, the number of delivery services, and the location, manner, and times of operation of the establishments and distributors. So you're being kind of fanatic by saying that the state doesn't have any information out there because you would still write the rules on who could open the dispensary and where. And the only thing that the state would do would be stuff other states have done.
Do you think the governing body should have any type of input when it comes to which licenses go to which individuals? Because currently, that would be the case.
Is it the way liquor licenses should be right now, which is by whoever pays money for them?
Correct, who buys them?
Yes.
From someone else?
Right. So where's the oversight on that? Like, what kind of oversight are you talking about that means that is in fact?
Actually, the municipal, not anybody can just have a license. They have to, there are certain qualifications and background checks that the mayor previously mentioned that require they need to pass all those standards in order to own a license. And in addition to that, they actually have to submit facility plans that are also reviewed, the layouts of the facility. So for example, until the governor and the state issued regulations and orders during the pandemic, establishments with liquor licenses couldn't even serve alcohol outdoors. So there's things of that specific nature that are addressed comprehensively in the liquor license regulations, for example, that we don't have any of those regulations whatsoever to dictate how the license, we don't know how the state is going to issue licenses, how there are certain general parameters that the statute says the municipality can have jurisdiction over, but we don't know how that's going to be transmitted from the state to the municipality, what standards are going to be used by the state to issue licenses. You know, let's say the municipality said, okay, we'll authorize up to two or three licenses in a certain class or another. But we don't know what standards the state is, a state going to require voter control, for example, on a manufacturing facility or things like that, whether those are the control standards, security standards. There's a multitude of issues that have to be addressed, not just from a licensing perspective, but also from a zoning perspective. We have no regulations whatsoever.
I appreciate wanting to wait. The state actually gives you something to work with, but it's also reasonable to anticipate what the state might come up with, given that we're not the first ones to do this, we're fourteen.
Okay, so if that was the case, though, how far should a marijuana dispensary be from a school?
Up to unit aside, literally up to unit aside.
Actually, with the state would set the criteria, certain criteria. Correct. And what happens? But not if I don't out that it. I have to do it by August twenty first.
August twenty first, you just have to say that I either don't want to have sales in my town or do.
No, not correct.
Or if you pass this ban.
No. That is not correct. How far should a marijuana dispensary be from a school? How far should it be from a house of worship? How far should it be from a park? I mean, you're taking away certain rights of parents when it comes to this, whether or not to inform a police officer and then hold them liable. I mean, you, what you're saying is that you're okay with whatever the state comes down with in the end because you are going to give up all control that this governing body has. You are, S twenty, S twenty-one, which was the bill that was signed into law, okay? Brian Stack, Senator, Union City, okay? Not only is he the senator from there, but he's also the mayor. He voted for it and went to the floor in Trenton, in the State House, and pushed the green button. Yep, good to go. He went home and banned it, was one of the first towns to ban it, okay? Paul Sarlow, Senator from Burton County, Chairman of the Senate Budget Appropriations, good with it, lets it fly through, okay? Goes home, bans it. Not only does he ban it, he gets a consortium of Burton County towns to all pass the same ban because he didn't want it near Woodridge, okay? Asbury Park, eighty percent, eighty percent of the public voted for the referendum. The Democratic mayor, the Democratic council, voted to ban it for the exact same reasons that I am saying here tonight. It's because no one has any clue. When a Cannabis Regulatory Commission has not made a single announcement since March twenty fourth, okay? Today is July nineteenth. You're telling me that a state entity that is tasked with having to implement regulations can't provide a simple press release? The Democratic mayor of Clinton Township, the president of the League of Municipalities, which represents five hundred and sixty-five municipalities across the state of New Jersey, begged the Cannabis Regulatory Commission, begged them at their last meeting, please, please, give us, give municipalities more time to figure out, should I have a cannabis dispensary next to a school? Should I have it next to a church, a synagogue, a mosque? Should I have it next to a park? We have six thousand acres of parks in this town, we have seventy parks. Should we allow for dispensaries to be right next to them? Any reasonable person would say no. So to insinuate that, well, we can just do this and while we hope that the state allows us, that's, not only is that irresponsible to the greatest degree, but that's just not realistic. Every single bill, the last line of every bill passed by the legislature says this act shall take effect X immediately, ninety days, upon recommendations by the established commission. Okay, well, the arbitrary August twenty first deadline that now we are just supposed to say, okay, well, we hope that you did it the right way, okay? And the revenue discussion? Well, you weren't here for the budget presentation, but at the end of the budget presentation, and if Colleen was here, she'd be able to give you the right numbers. This is, the township of Middletown was supposed to get eleven million dollars this year from what's called the energy receipts tax, are you familiar? Okay, so the energy receipts tax is a, basically rent for any municipality when a utility utilizes their right of way to have lines, wires, pipes, whatever. Well, since two thousand and four, the state of New Jersey has been stealing that money from the municipality because in two thousand and four, the state legislature said, you know what? Instead of utility companies paying municipalities, you pay the state of New Jersey and we'll give you the money. Last year, the amount of money that has now been skimmed off the top is greater than Middletown's two thousand and twenty-one budget. They have been stealing money. So the notion that Middletown is going to get a windfall of cash, not happening. I will trust them the minute they refund me all my energy receipts tax and I can supply an actual tax break, not the quasi-tax break that marijuana is going to provide us. That is not going to happen. To not act today is not only irresponsible, it's impractical. And the people of this town, whether they voted for it or didn't, did not sign up for enabling legislation that gave no insight, no authority, and just a, well, we hope you get it right. Typical, typical trend, typical.
Tony, I'm not here so you can campaign for whatever higher office that you're tying.
I'm not campaigning for higher office. My name is on the ballot this year for this chair, okay?
But the idea that
On November second, my name will be on the ballot.
Okay. The idea that New Jersey would get this far from the wrong is a little far fetched. I'm legally frustrated that they would take so long to hire yourself, given that we're fourteen to do it. It shouldn't be rocket science, we're not rebuilding the wheel from scratch here, right? We're the fourteenth state out of fifty, that's not great. You don't want to get that in a ranking for a sports team.
Did Colorado do everything the same that New Jersey did? Was the enabling legislation of Colorado the exact same as New Jersey?
Of course not, but there's
Let's not, let's not compare the two.
Between things that work and things that don't work, and we have history to study to know that all of it, and you have to assume the commission is doing that. I'm not saying they'll get it right, but that's what we ultimately, the town.
I'm supposed to, so what you're saying is I'm supposed to assume that what they're doing is looking at other states, not saying that you believe that they're going to get it right?
No, you're already acting in full faith that they'll get it wrong a hundred percent. I'm saying.
I'm guaranteeing the people of Middletown that I'm going to give my professionals and the people who need to oversee this town, that that are the the planners, the engineers, the attorneys, the people who understand that, I'm giving them the ability to ensure that it i- i- is is good for the residents of this town. But since the state of New Jersey, but but you're advocating the opposite.
I'm not necessarily saying that I don't want to do this, but there's nothing in this ordinance that says we'll look at it again at a given date.
No ordinance says that. There's no sunset clauses. There's no, in ordinances, in ordinances, in ordinance.
When you expect the public to take your faith that you're not just crusading against marijuana usage in town or purchasing it now, however you want to talk about it, but that you're just doing this for the sake of being responsible, what faith do we have to go off on that? We won't see a town, be dry like Ocean Grove.
Faith do I have that the state of New Jersey is going to give me the money, the tax revenue that that were promised? Okay, if I look at the history that you that you're talking about, yeah, you're you're darn right. I have zero percent confidence that the state of New Jersey. Okay, year after year, we're robbed. We are robbed. We are robbed of being able to do more streets, pave more streets. We're robbed of being able to upgrade parks. Okay, these are all real things. These are all real actionable items that we should be doing. And if the Cannabis Regulatory Commission gave any type of insight, rather than just holding these two P M meetings that, right, all normal working people can can take part in, okay? So there's, there's a time to discuss that, but not when you're pinched up against the wire and told by the state of New Jersey, you have to do it now, and by the way, good luck trying to figure it out. Zero insight. That's irresponsible, no matter how you cut it. I appreciate your comments. Thank you very much. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment?
Please, everyone, keep silent. Here's that United States is descending for lawlessness. Marijuana, still this very day, is scheduled one drug. We feel federal law against possession of, you know, manufactured, you want to quote, growing marijuana. And the only thing that's stopping people that had marijuana dispensaries from going to federal prison for the rest of their life is the fact that President Obama decided to fill the DOJ to ignore the law, which in itself is impeachable. He swore an oath of holding the Constitution, failed to do it, and the president since then has allowed this to stand. As far as the Marijuana Regulatory Commission, there are a bunch of state meetings. You can't get a straight answer from the state about what to do, and you're right not to trust them. Whatever they come up with is going to be straight and following your life here in Middletown, and you can't allow that to happen. They have two P M meetings, and I understand why they think they're in a bubble at their two P M meeting because their two P M meeting is not attended by people that actually have a stake in the community. You get people that live in the basement of their parents' house attending meetings at two P M. As far as, as far as the tax money, you're right. They'll never pass down any tax money that they get, should there ever be any real tax money that comes from it. They even steal pension money, the public employees, every year. As far as the last speaker's mentioning, oh, this is, if the majority of the citizens want this, well, we don't live in a democracy. That's an absolute fallacy. We live in a representative republic. The reason it's representative republic is so that people like you can examine these things and make proper decisions, even if it goes against what the majority wants when the majority is wrong. There are plenty of big examples in the history of this country where people wanted something and they had to be over. As far as, as far as the whole law, there's already a lot of other towns that allow this to happen. Plenty of places for degenerate drunk people. Go by their weed surrounding towns. We don't need it here.
Thank you, Bill. Any other member of the public? Yes, sir.
What about combat that, PTS, that grow marijuana in New York? Are you guys looking to ban that?
That's not. Home grow is not permitted under state law. It has nothing to do with the township. Can't regulate that.
Can't regulate that.
But there's, there's, there are certain legislative measures, but this statute does not allow that. That would be criminal still under the statute.
There was a piece of leg- sorry. There was a piece of legislation that was proposed after this bill was signed into law that that would allow that to occur. But but this doesn't, this, this ordinance does not address anything about medical or medicinal marijuana. It's simply recreational.
Will the board work on anything with medical and medicinal within Middletown?
Will the board, well, the state of New Jersey has to issue licenses. The state has not issued any licenses at all.
So basically, the state's dragging our fate.
It's a common theme. Thank you, sir. Have a good day. Yes. Mayor.
Thank you. Good evening, committee, mayor committee, Tony Fiori, twenty-nine, Rash Boulevard. First of all, I thank you for taking this ordinance and this action up tonight. This is something that I know has been discussed for many township, many years now, going back to two thousand seventeen or two thousand eighteen anticipation of the state legalizing or now putting a vote to legalize use of recreational marijuana. But just so I'm clear on what the state has passed, it's my understanding, and I'm not here to ask you tonight, I think it would be unfair for any resident to come up and ask you tonight what your personal opinion is, you know, whether the marijuana should be law, should be allowed, it shouldn't be allowed because that was voted on, and I think we've all agreed that, you know, we uphold the law, whatever, the law of the taxpayers. However, it's my understanding, this doesn't necessarily ban marijuana in the municipality that you can, under the state law, you can have marijuana delivered to your door, for example. Okay, so I don't see, and I've never seen, the benefit to Middletown or any municipality in passing in ordinance to allow recreational jobs. The argument that you made very clear, the argument made on treating marijuana, recreational marijuana like alcohol, isn't even close to being treated like alcohol, and you all know that, and the public knows that, and the lawmakers like Paul Sarlow know that. Okay, numbers have been talked, have been brought out from the state. They're all hypothetical numbers, three hundred dollars an ounce of recreational marijuana, where they get a thirty-five percent cut of the tax, and the municipality gets potentially two percent. Six bucks, ladies and gentlemen, six bucks an ounce. That ain't going to change this budget. As someone who's done these budgets in these, in Middletown over the last twelve years, I can guarantee. What this will become is another unfunded state mandate. So for the residents of Middletown that want marijuana, I don't think any of you would tell them that they can't access it, have it sent to your home. Go to another municipality that gets transitional aid, aid to, aid to distressed cities. One hundred and forty-seven million dollars of CARES Act money, some some towns got. There there's an economic benefit. There's going to be a place for residents of Middletown to go get it, to go get it if they want to. So I challenge the notion that this should be allowing it, because this will cost this municipality well more than it ever brings it. That is not a, that is not a prediction, that's an absolute fact. And with respect to zoning and popular opinion and the will of the voters, seventy-five percent of people believe wind energy is a good idea. Yet I don't believe you should put a windmill on top of town hall. Not if you are going to get anything for it. And in this legislation, Middletown will get nothing for it. Just like energy receipts taxes, just like the unfunded state mandates in the past, Middletown will suffer. Police say it will have to increase. You cannot even, you cannot even deposit the cash in the bank like that. How do you overcome that? After robbery, after investigation, how much does it cost for an investigation? We all know the answer to that. So I avoid you from taking this up. I think it would be absolute malfeasance of this committee to approve this based on the state's, the state's regulations as it stands. And I don't care if it's five years or fifty, this municipality will never benefit from a state mandated law in which this is just purely made to fill the state coffers at your expense, like everything else that goes on in the state. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other member of the public from here in Town Hall that would like to make a comment? Okay, seeing all the members of the public here at Town Hall, Heidi, if we can open it up to, we have a few speakers joining us via WebEx.
Would you like to make a comment?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening. My name is Edward Lefty Grimes. I'm with Sativa Cross dot org. We're a five oh one C three here in New Jersey advocating for disabled rights, cannabis patients' rights, and disabled vets. This ordinance does not talk about medical cannabis being exempt from this at all. Medical cannabis is included in this. No matter what you try to say and backpedal out of this, you're including medical in this ban because you have no place where you're going to zone anything for medical cannabis. So don't even say you have a plan for medical cannabis, suppose you don't. You're playing political football with the sick and the dying. You're playing political football with our disabled vets. And that's, that's what really bothers me because Middletown is very unfriendly towards disabled vets because you have no wheelchair access anywhere in your town. At all around Route thirty-six, there's no wheelchair access, no ord- no ordinance puts any, puts in place to help people in wheelchairs, to help disabled vets. You are just, what I, oh, you also talked about Brian Stack. I did talk to Brian Stack. Brian Stack did vote yes on the vote, and he also voted yes for compassion and disabled vets and for medical dispensaries in Union City. So don't say that Brian Stack did voted no. He voted yes. He voted the right way. He voted for the vets. So don't act like you're, you're, you care about the vets because a lot of you Republicans, and I'm Republican too, a lot of you Republicans down there are flapping your gums how much you care about the vets, but really, you're playing political football with the vets. And I'll tell you why. Because disrupting the supply chain of medicine to our vets is a wartime move. I want to know who you're at war with and why you're at war with our own vets. Between the wheelchair access and banning their medicine, you're proving that vets are not wanted in Middletown. Disabled vets can go somewhere else. Well, how far do you expect them to wheel themselves in their wheelchairs? Have you ever spent a day in a wheelchair? I'll do it with you, and I, you won't do it with me, but I'll do it with you. You come meet me and we'll go and spend a day in a wheelchair in Middletown, and I'll show you how bad it is for disabled vets in your town. And where are we going to go to get cannabis? Let's decide where we're going to go in our wheelchairs to get cannabis in Middletown. Let's figure it out. Well, the black market's all available. We can't get it delivered. We've been waiting for delivery since Jake's Law. Jake's Law was passed years ago. We're still waiting for delivery. The black market delivers, though. But the Attorney General, well, he shut them down real quick. The black market said, oh, we'll take it, we'll take care of the patients, we'll deliver. Well, nope, they were shut down. I thought we voted on this. Why is this still, why are we still finding ways around this law and finding ways around the will of the people? Yeah, the people voted for it. You think they voted for it to to not have access to it? Of course they want access to it, and our vets need to be treated better than you're treating them. Absolutely disgusting treatment over our vets. Even the Taliban has to give our trips to medicine that they need under the Geneva Convention. You're not even fulfilling the Geneva Convention. You're not even doing the will. You're doing worse than the Taliban is laughing at you guys. You gotta be kidding me right now. Our vets need help. Our vets in wheelchairs need help. What are you doing for them? You're flapping your gums. That's what you're doing. You're waiting for a big fish to come in, a big fish from Canada or another company to come in, a corporate billionaire to come in, and then you'll change your ordinance. But no, the mom and pop guys, the the working class guys, no, we're screwed again. We can't open a business in Middletown. No, you're going to wait for the corp, I guarantee, I guarantee it, mark my words. You're going to wait for corporate cannabis to come in there, and you'll have the Walmarts of weed in Middletown. Mark my words. That's what I see. And I'm disgusted at what I see here. They went with songs to the battle. They were young, straight of limb, true of eye, steady and to glow. They were staunch to the end against odds uncounted. They fell with their faces to the foe. They shall grow not old, as we that are left grow old. Age shall not weary them, nor the years condemn. At the going down of the sun and in the morning, we will remember them. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes, my name is Hugh Giordano, and I am a union representative for the United Food and Commercial Workers Union, UFCW. The United Food and Commercial Workers Union, the UFCW is a national labor union of one point three million hardworking families, and we are the official, official cannabis labor union under the guise of the AFL-CIO. We are also working in conjunction with our union brothers and sisters in the IBEW, steam fitters, carpenters, who will be doing the retrofit and buildout of these facilities. So cannabis jobs are going to be from shovel to sale, union. S twenty-one makes it very clear that labor standards were important and part of social equity because workers' rights and social equity are the same conversation. The Cannabis Commission, the UFCW, first off, opposes and opt out because it hurts good jobs, it hurts working class people, it stifles economic growth for the middle class. We, we believe that the commission has made it very clear that since March twenty-fourth, they've had numerous meetings at numerous times, and they've tried to make it adaptable because I've been on every single one that to working people based on their schedules. They've had some at six P M, some at eleven, some at two. So they're thinking about the third shifter, the first shifter, and I think it's, and I've heard it on record that that was their, their reason for doing that. On numerous records, on numerous occasions on record, the Cannabis Commission has said that they were going to leave such things as zoning and a hands-off policy, and that was on record. The commissioner, the chairperson, Diana Waynew, I heard her say with her own mouth on the Zoom that they were going to take a hands-off as far as zoning. As far as to where you put them, even currently, the medical recommendations are that. They're just recommendations. It says a thousand feet from a church, from a school, but it's a recommendation. Other towns have done it differently, two hundred and fifty, five hundred feet, so it's up to you. S twenty-one makes it very clear of home rule that you get to make your own ordinance. And I'll give some, something on, an example of that. The city of Bayonne, three months ago, took the leadership role and said, we're going to make, this is our city, we're elected, and we're going to take control of this. And that's what they did. And they passed an ordinance three months ago that has application fees, renewal fees, how many of each license they want, which licenses they that they don't want. And they also have a merit-based application system. So that way, they can actually make sure that the people that come in are decent employers. They look at environmental standards, they look at labor standards, they look at security standards, they even look at local ownership. So the city of Bayonne has taken that leadership role already, and it's a very conservative ordinance, but it's already there, and other towns and cities are doing it. Just because you don't hear about it in the news doesn't mean it's not happening. Tonight, Somerville, just adopting an ordinance based off the city of Bayonne's ordinance to allow. And they're taking that leadership role. These jobs are live and wage jobs, healthcare, sick time, vacation, retirement, paternity leave. And they come with a voice on the job. And on top of that, they're educated jobs, people with degrees in chemistry, botany, horticulture. Currently, in the facilities that we represent, right now in New Jersey, the the retail establishments have pharmacists in them. So these are high-end, middle-class, educated jobs that add to a community, is not detrimental to a community. The quality of life goes up when you have educated young people moving into a community. We, we should not be diminishing also having access to retail does not mean access to children. That's disrespectful to the working people. When a Budweiser, when our members, we represent Bacardi, represent Jim Beam, when our members deliver Bacardi and Jim Beam, does anybody think about them giving out to a twelve-year-old? Absolutely not. Absolutely not. When you go to the Rite Aid or a ShopRite or an Acme or Stop &amp; Shop, the facilities that the UFCW represents, do you, the, the, do you think the pharmacy tech is giving out pills behind the scenes? No. So why would we think that these workers would be, be that way? They, they are responsible adults, just like every other career and industry. So I would ask that you adopt the city of Bayonne's ordinance or use as a template. And I can also offer you a tour of the Garden State dispensary in Woodbridge if you want to see a seed to sale vertically integrated facility. So you could see it for yourself, you don't have to ask Aunt Millie in Colorado anymore. This is what we do, UFCW is the official cannabis labor union, we've been doing this for over a decade. We believe in this, AFL-CIO endorses this, the Building Trades endorses this, and we hope that you will reconsider, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, good evening, my name is Jamie Van Skyver. Um, I also am with Sativa Cross nonprofit, um, Greenwich Avenue in Paulsbury, New Jersey. Um, would you be open to a medical dispensary in your community?
This ordinance doesn't prohibit them.
But I think with the language used, it, it does say all cannabis and if I were looking to open a medical cannabis dispensary, I would assume that you were banning that as well. I think the language used adds to, you know, the stigmatizing of people's medication. Um, people deal with chronic illness and chronic pain. These are conditions that are not going away. These are spinal problems and nerve problems and cancer treatments and infusions. To their medication. Sixty-four point ninety-three percent of Middleton residents voted for legalization. That's for adult recreational use. I don't believe that people voted for something to be legal and don't want to have access to it. I understand that you're like banning this now, but like even if it were a recreational facility, people on disability that don't drive, that are on a very fixed income, it could be how much for an Uber ride to go to a dispensary? And people are so misinformed talking about delivery, that was voted on over two years ago, Jake Conings Law, and that's not here. And that should be an option, that shouldn't be the prerequisite for people to get something that's legal in your community. People should be able to go out and participate in their purchase to, you know, look at the product. To speak with the bud tender, to say, you know, these are the symptoms that I'm experiencing, I'm going through an infusion right now. I'm going through chemotherapy right now, I'm dealing with a lot of nausea and upset stomach, what can you recommend? You know, being sick doesn't mean that you're on house arrest and everything should just be delivered and you don't get to go out and participate in life at all. You have bars, you have pharmacies, like they have access to these things in your community. And, you know, Mr. Grimes was speaking about veterans earlier, there's a lot of veterans speaking out for cannabis. There's a lot of veterans dealing with depression, PTSD. And when we give them, we give them antidepressants, SSRIs, and that can sometimes unfortunately increase suicide desire. Like, what are we doing? You're fine with narcotics, the controlled substances, the fentanyl, the oxycontin that's coming out of the pharmacies, and that's the stuff that people are overdosing on and why your Narcan count's going up. That's never happened in history with cannabis, it's impossible. Um, the dispensaries are very secure. We're not able to, you know, use our debit cards there usually, so people are going in with a lot of cash and coming out with, you know, and a, a great amount of product, you know. There's security, you check in with your medical card and your state ID, driver's license, you're in a waiting area, and then when you check out your product, you also show your medical card and your ID. People are not like doing things out the back door, nobody's going to have access to it that shouldn't. This is a legal substance, your community voted for it. And earlier I heard you say that it's up to the government body and not the population. All I heard was you saying that you don't care what two-thirds of your constituents want, sixty-four point ninety-three percent wanted legalization. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes.
Hi, my name is Jeffrey King, I'm at twenty-four Elizabeth Parkway, Eton Town. Uh, wanted to, uh, say that I'm disappointed that this ban is being put out there, had any other, uh, initiative to work on zoning that would be appropriate for Middletown. I thought that, uh, Tintin Falls took a good action. And I know we know a little bit about what's going on in Tintin Falls here, and we have some common, commonalities, right? So they have a select committee, their select committee is made up of borough professionals that will, uh, talk about what's good for the community, what works, what doesn't. Come up with a plan to suggest to council after the regulations of the CRC from Trenton come out. So that's a little bit more palatable than just a straight ban and say, no, 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 it's going to destroy the community. Some of that rhetoric was a little bit hysterical. And, uh, we didn't have racism involved in the rhetoric, but that's the only thing missing really. There's a lot of, uh, stigma, stigmatizing the community, the consumers, litter and loitering and all this. It was offensive to me, some of it, I, I don't know why that has to get thrown out there. With respect to the rhetoric about, uh, the state not paying for electric fees, okay, well, that's something different. Right now Patterson is collecting twenty-five thousand dollars on, on their one single medical dispensary. So that's three hundred thousand dollars here for city size of Patterson, means less than it does to you, right? I don't know about whose budget's bigger or smaller or what, but that's three good high-paying jobs, six-figure jobs that you could save for the community. That's a lot of little guy jobs like what I make, so let's not poo-poo it, it's real money, it matters. That's the tax break that would help, it would definitely help. So if you say, oh, the community is more important than any financial consideration, that's what happened in the nineteen twenties during alcohol prohibition, and we had the result of, uh, gangsters taking over and doing it on the black market underground, speakeasies, that was very dangerous, it was a failure, it was a failure. So right now, we haven't learned that maybe there's a lesson from that. This is a parallel situation, maybe, we can take control, we can have a small business that's local, someone we know maybe grew up with running this business that cares about the community and wants to reinvest and make it better, build it. Fill in an empty retail area, fill in an empty, uh, industrial zone. Redevelop a site that maybe has constraints that, that's been sitting vacant or, uh, blighted. You know, you know what your zoning is, you know it would fit in, and I know that you brought up Asbury Park. So I see you're playing the same game of just waiting until your friends can get lined up to get the spoils of the victory that the voters fought for. So if you'd say something in favor of homegrowing to your friends in Trenton, that would be appreciated. I know Middletown has their own seat in the assembly, so please tell Mr. Sharpenberger to speak for homegrowing if he's for individual rights and personal freedom, liberty. Um, tell Murphy he's wrong to not support homegrowing, fight him on that, come on, if you want to be conservative, let's go for the rights of the individual. I can't believe you're saying get it delivered, Amazon, you want Amazon to come in and knock out more small businesses? That is crazy talk. You want Amazon to run your businesses into the ground, that's nuts. I don't know why you would go down that road, that's really like, I don't know what party that, that rhetoric comes from, but I don't appreciate it. So thank you for letting me have my say.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, hi, can you hear me? Yes, hi, my name is Marina Redmond, I'm with Sativa Cross. Um, I also like to discuss medical marijuana and how much it's helped me with my journey through PTSD and cancer. Um, I was born with a severe birth defect on my lower left leg. Um, I had to have a bunch of surgeries in a major New York City hospital where it was really scary. Back then, your mother and father weren't allowed to stay over. So I had to watch my parents walk away from me, I heard all sorts of scary noises, seeing all sorts of things. Um, and all sorts of different procedures. And then when I was four and a half, I had my leg amputated. Whenever I was going inside the operating rooms to have a bunch of surgeries done, my mother wasn't allowed to go in there and walk me in, like you were, like, like you're allowed to do today. You weren't allowed to have your stuffed animal, so you can hold it, so you can go to sleep, I was terrified with all these people and their masks. Then in two thousand seventeen, I was diagnosed with cancer. I lost fifty pounds in three weeks. None of the medications they gave me worked. Alls I did was vomit for like almost three weeks. Like I said, I lost fifty pounds within three weeks, imagine that, it was horrible. My oncologist would especially say, please smoke before you have treatment, go smoke in the parking lot. How many doctors would tell you, go smoke medical marijuana, cannabis in a parking lot? There's a lot, believe it or not. Um, you have, you have almost two hundred and eighty Walgreens in the state of New Jersey, four hundred CVSs that all prescribe medical can- that, that prescribe opioids. Um, you also have two doctors in your town that prescribe medical cannabis, one of them is an oncologist who is helping people live and to get better. Um, you're sixty-five psychiatric doctors in the state of New Jersey that prescribe medical cannabis where people have PTSD. You have ten pediatric doctors in the state of New Jersey that prescribe medical cannabis. Pediatric doctors helping little children. And you guys can't put a medical dispensary in your town, that is so hurtful and mean.
Um, Man, just, just so, just so we're clear, this has to do with recreational dispensaries, not medical.
Oh, thank you, so you're putting one in?
I'm not personally.
So, so, so you're okay with medical dispensary?
Uh, I know, just one second, the state has not issued any licenses for medical, so anywhere in the state of New Jersey, you can't get them because there are no licenses that the state has issued. This ordinance does not have anything to do with medical cannabis or medical marijuana. This has to do with recreational.
As soon as the state says you can have a medical marijuana in your town, would you do it immediately?
It's, it's not up for me to do, man, uh, somebody comes and if they have a license, they can apply for that. They, they can apply for zoning and planning at our, at our planning board and, and, uh, at Fort Worth. This ordinance does not prohibit it.
So then you would turn down a medical marijuana dispensary? Um, I just have a couple of questions, how many liquor stores? Um, and how far away are they from your schools and are you religious centers? Are they all a mile away in your daycare centers? Because a lot of these, uh, you know.
I don't know how many we have in town, man. We're forty-two, we're a forty-two square mile town.
Okay. Well, just,
But just, just be clear, is it, the, this has nothing to do with medical marijuana.
Can you please keep your ordinance open that says we will, we will have a medical marijuana dispensary in our town?
That, that's not, that's not what the ordinance calls for, the ordinance, it has to do with recreational. It doesn't list what you can have, it says what you can't or must follow along with.
So do you personally want a medical marijuana dispensary in your town?
Do I, do I personally want one? I, I mean, i- if somebody has the, the, the right background and the right efforts to be able to provide anyone with, with medicinal marijuana that they are prescribed, they have a right to come and apply for that application. If, if, if this governing body up here, this governing body for, since two thousand seventeen has said that we would not act on medicinal marijuana in terms of banning. That is what we've said now for four years. So this has to do with recreational.
So then you're open to?
The question, the question is not as simple as would you allow it or, or, or would you, would you be okay with it? It, it has to fit within the confines of the law, there's criteria, this, but again, this is all, uh, you know, all for nothing because the state of New Jersey, which several speakers have brought up that are in support of recreational marijuana have said, we, we want to have it delivered, well, call the Attorney General. They're the ones that have to implement the law. You, you know, the, the, the town has to act before August twenty-first, but hey, you know what? Let the office of the Attorney General have two years before they even get to look at the law. I, I, I'm sorry, I, I, and I, and I just want to say this, I, I, I feel terrible for the hurt that you're going through in terms of your, of your treatment. I feel horrible of the fact that you have to, to, you know, live each day as you've described. Um, you know, no person should have to live like that. And I, I, I just, there's nothing more I can say other than I'm, that I'm sorry that, that you go through that, but that this ordinance doesn't have to do with medical, this, this has to do with recreational.
All right, just please keep an open mind, if, when someone comes in with an application into your town for medical, please keep a very open mind to it. And like Hugh Giordano said, go on a tour with him, would you be willing to go on a tour with him in Woodbridge?
In Woodbridge? Uh, I, I'll go on any tour to see what, what, what the facility has to look like. Uh, I mean, I, I'm not, I'm not afraid to see the operation.
Okay.
But I will, I'll take him up on that offer, it's been extended to me before and I'll be happy to, to take him up on, not, not from him personally, but from others. Thank you very much. All right, Heidi, any other members of the public joining us via WebEx? Okay. We got everybody. I can't see this. Oh, okay, okay. Okay, um, seeing no further, uh, public comment, I, uh, move to close the public portion and approve, second.
Name and card?
Yes. Yes. Yes, yes.
At this time, our next item on tonight's agenda, we have introduction of the ordinances. First ordinance, twenty twenty-one dash three three point three, amended and restated ordinance authorizing granting of certain deeds of easement upon portions of the township-owned property pursuant to the Raritan Bay and Sandy Hook Bay Hurricane storm, uh, storm damage reduction project, Port Long, New Jersey, phase two contract four.
Motion, motion to introduce, second.
Name and card?
Yes.
Minimum incentive, yes.
Yes.
Many women's now, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held on the second meeting in August.
August.
The second meeting in August, right?
It is. Yeah. Our only meeting in August, just, just to be clear.
Our next item on tonight's agenda, we have twenty twenty-one, that's three three one four, amended and reinstated, restated ordinance authorizing granting of certain deeds of easement upon portions of the township-owned property pursuant to the Raritan Bay and Sandy Hook Bay Hurricane storm damage reduction projects, New Jersey, phase two contract five.
Motion introduced, second.
Minimum card?
Yes.
Minimum incentive, yes. Minimum women's now, yes.
Yes. Yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Next item, reduction, twenty twenty-one, that's three three one five, bond ordinance providing an appropriation of nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for acquisition of cannabis in carpet oil and storage accessories for the police department by and for the township of Middletown, the county of Long Island, New Jersey, and authorizing the issuance of six hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and seven dollars in bonds or notes of the township or finances in part of the appropriation.
Motion introduces, second.
Minimum card?
Yes.
Minimum incentive, yes. Minimum women's now, yes. Definitely mayor, hi, though.
Yes, yes.
Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public, with a public. Motion carries to pass this ordinance on first reading with a public hearing to be held August sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. At this time, I'd like to ask the township committee to adopt a consent agenda, which would include resolutions twenty-one dash four seventy-nine twenty-one dash four ninety-six, including go around applications.
Motion to approve consent agenda. Second.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Miniman Center Bruno.
Yes.
Yes. Deputy Mayor Hybough.
Yes.
Mayor Curry.
Yes.
Motion carries to adopt consent agenda. At this time, I'd like to ask the township committee acting as the agency, issuing authority to adopt resolution twenty-one dash ninety-seven, resolution for the annual liquor license renewal of twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two term of license number one three three one, that's three three dash zero zero, which is the, uh, the state of.
Motion to approve. Second.
Miniman Clark.
Yes.
Miniman Center Bruno.
Yes.
Many women's now, yes.
Yes, yes. Committee of Men Center Bruno.
I just matter only with a few comments this evening. It'll just be about an hour. So, uh, just to get back to events earlier today, um, the, the mayor said something regards to sports teams that we had here representing, uh, north and south Middletown and certainly the success of this. Sweet Lordy members, thank you so much. Being here and leading our students in that fashion. Um, but the, the mayor said something that I don't know who it's written, sure it was your words, but I'm, I'm going to repeat. He said, success as a team equals success as a township. And I think that really.
Oh, wow, that's pretty good. Can I have it?
Sure. And, and I took that, I think that really captures, uh, what's happened here with the teams that we have honored this evening. In fact, they've honored, uh, us in Middletown by putting Middletown back again on the map. Uh, and, uh, as we have always been and making us proud to be one town. And I just wanted to take it to you, to repeat that statement because it is not the individual that, um, that makes, uh, Middletown great. Uh, it is, uh, those individuals acting as a team. I'd like to think it does happen up here on the township committee. I'd like to be a part of it. And, uh, when we see people and teams in town embody that, um, those will be our future leaders tomorrow. So, um, could really, could really let see them here this evening. Um, and the, the second item, this evening we had, uh, six new police officers supporting. And every time I, uh, attend any of the swearing, swearing, new police officers, I listen to see what their background is. And more often than not, um, many of the new police officers here in town left other police departments in the state of New Jersey, other depart, other law enforcement departments to come here to Middletown, be a part of this township police department. And frankly, that says tremendous, that says tremendous volumes to the leadership that we have here with the, with the chief and the deputy chiefs. And the fact that this township has been named not once, but many years as one of the state's partnerships in the state and certainly in the country. And, uh, we, I, I continue to be proud and honored that we have, uh, members of law enforcement that want to lead other law enforcement communities to come here. So I'm glad to, glad to see that, uh, we're tracking the, the best year for residency here in Middletown Township. Um, and that, that is all I have, uh, to note this evening, mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Committee woman's now.
Thank you, mayor. Uh, I too would like to congratulate our six new police officers. And quite frankly, in my opinion, they are now part of the finest police force. So that's personal. I'd also like to congratulate the three sports teams that were here for their championships. And I will make note that there were two ladies teams and one gentleman's team. So I wanted to get that going across, yes. But at the end of that, our children are the reason we continue to make sport, uh, smart improvements to our sports facilities and our fields. Because without them being able to practice on a field that's well cared for and safe, they would never get to the pinnacle of the championships that they were able to get. So, um, that's really important. I'd also like to sort of update everybody on our fundraising efforts at the memorial gardens for the anniversary of nine eleven. The brick order went in today. Um, they are all guaranteed to be laid in time for the anniversary on September eleventh. But we are continuing the brick order and as they come in, they will be laid, um, and will belong on the walkway. Uh, we're going to start at the street and go toward the arches to begin with, and we're going to go as far as we can with the bricks that are ordered at this point and then continuing it as they commit. Um. See, oh, the lawn signs. Close to my heart on that. We have almost run out, so we need to order more. Um, and it will be back in time for everyone to order them again or come to see us, um, either at the train station or ShopRite. We had an awesome weekend at ShopRite selling lawn signs, which is why we're so close to running out right now. Some of the conversations I've had with the residents of this town were very moving. Um, and I'll probably get a little choked up here because some of them were very emotional for me. They talked about their own experiences. An ironworker, a police officer that was there. And the effort that this community is making in such a given spirit to honor these victims and their families is really moving. I've been doing this every weekend, Saturday and Sunday for probably a little over two months now. And I can't tell you the amount of stories that I've heard. And not only local stories, but we're sending these signs all over the country. They're going to Colorado, they're going to Texas, they're going to Florida, they're going to California. Um, there are people here visiting families or friends. And they're going to ShopRite to shop and they walk past the table and they look and they say, what are you doing? I said, we're selling lawn signs for the anniversary of nine eleven. I can't believe it's been twenty years. And I looked at them and I said, you know, some days it feels like yesterday and other days it feels like decades ago. So, and they begin to talk. And I feel very honored to be able to sit and listen. So to all of you that are virtually in here, thank you from the bottom of my heart for supporting this effort. Um, I truly feel it's a community effort and it's from the heart. So for that, I thank you. And banners are still available as well. They're to be hung along Church Street and Kings Highway. And we'll be able to order them for a little bit now. So if anyone's interested in that, you can go online at www dot Middletown remembers nine eleven dot com. And, um, all those banners that are purchased will go with the sponsor. Um, they'll be able to take the homeless moment. So I thank you for listening.
Committee woman's now, uh, congratulations on, on really a successful fundraiser, Committee Clark. Uh, excellent job. Uh, I, I'm starting to see all those lawn signs pop out of all over place and, and, uh, you know, it truly embodies that what we've said from the beginning in that Middletown will never forget. And that's, that's the mentality we'll take, uh, going into what will be a very difficult, um, twentieth anniversary. Um, with Committeeman Clark.
Thank you, Mr. Grant. First, uh, like I go, everybody else's sentiment about our new police officers, it really is, um, it's remarkable that they're willing to leave municipalities where they've started to establish themselves to come here. Uh, shows a lot of, uh, shows a lot of what our leadership's got in this town from the sergeants, the lieutenants, the chiefs, everybody. So, uh, welcome to the team, uh, to our state champs. This is how I'm learning that I'm getting old. Uh, I've got friends now whose kids were, uh.
I'll remind you, Ryan.
Thanks. Um, I, I've lived here my entire life and, uh, I've got three or four friends who's, uh, who's sons and daughters were on these teams. And, uh, it's pretty cool to see. So it's actually really cool to see. And I, you know, I was, I was fortunate enough to be part of a state championship team at the town south. Um, and to see these young men and women doing that too is really good. It's, it's something else. Um, I, I just want to echo the mayor's comments about, um, about our marijuana. Right? It seems to keep on getting lost, um, through this entire thing. What saying no truly means. Saying no empowers us to do what's right for us, for the town, for the people who voted to allow it to happen. Saying yes takes all the power away from us, gives it to the state and gives us no leverage to do anything in the future. Okay, so anybody who has a comment, uh, moving forward that thinks that we're doing something wrong, research it because I know, I can say personally that everything that Mayor Perry said, I support one hundred percent. No question about it. Some of our constituents, uh, left before we got to the comment period and I wish they were here to hear that because, um, you know, they, they put words in people's mouths sometimes and it's, uh, doesn't need to happen that way. So, uh, thank you, Mayor Perry, for representing me well up here and I, I appreciate I speak to the other group as well, but, uh, I really do appreciate that. Um, I wanted to apologize to the employees of Middletown. I missed our picnic, uh, last week. I had an appreciation for employees. I couldn't make it. Um, I, I really appreciate everything you guys do. I wish I was there. But I, I apologize, but, uh, thank you for everything that you do. That goes, that goes right across for everybody. Um, echo Committee Woman Snow's comments about the nine eleven. Uh, thank you to everybody that's donated. Thank you to everybody that's going to donate. It, it truly is going to be awesome as this thing grows and develops. And if you have the opportunity before the nine eleven ceremony, come down and see what it looks like and see what it's going to look like, how it's going to grow. There's some great pictures. There's some great pictures on the, uh, on the website to look at, but I goes. Um, and, uh, that's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Committee Clark. Deputy Mayor.
Very brave, Mayor. You know, there's still people here who want us.
Everybody says that and then, you know.
I am going to be brave.
We never do.
Okay, you're going to, that's what happened last.
Everything, uh, was said tonight that was, uh, just, uh, just all amazing stuff. The, the six officers, the, the sports teams, uh, all good stuff here. Uh, I also just want to give a shout out to our Task Force One volunteers that, uh, uh, live here and, uh, volunteer in our town too. They just came home, I think, two days ago.
Yeah, Kevin, Kevin Marcy, Megan Fisher and Dan Kelly.
We had three, uh, three local heroes here that went, uh, went down there. So, and they're back and they did a great job, so. Mayor, that's all I have.
All right, you're the one that kept up your end of the bargain. Um, I, I just want to, uh, echo Deputy Mayor Hybough's comments. I got to speak to Kevin, who was the project manager while he was down in Florida for New Jersey Task Force One. And, uh, you, you know, him and I got to talking and, uh, talk about the strain that it had, you know, the twelve hour days, every single day, rotating shifts. Um, you know, knowing what they were going to find and, uh, being able to, to have the composure and the professionalism to, uh, day in and day out go. Um, you know, sadly, um, you know, our, uh, our professionals have, have had to, had to do something similar. Um, but, uh, that's why they're the best of the best and that's why they, they go all over the country and, and really all over the world. Um, to, to assist, uh, communities that, that have been devastated. I just want to make one other comment. It was made that I'm doing things to, uh, benefit my quote unquote, uh, political career. I'm going to make this one statement. I'm here to serve the residents of this town. You elected me and I'll continue to elect me so long as you do so. That's all I have to say about that. With that being said, any member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Yes, ma'am. Come right up here. Uh, I say you state your name and address for the record. And, uh, we ask that you keep your comments to five minutes. At four minutes, I'll let you know that you have one minute left. Okay, that's what all four of these guys said to me too.
Hi, my name is Lois Gabakis. I'm the one twenty-nine Maple Avenue, Melford, Drive sign in town. Um, this is my first town meeting. I've lived here for twenty-five years and this is awesome tonight. I don't have children. I've been with so many kids in my life, so it was just. That's my bedtime. Thank you for your service. I'll go put a word in myself, so I know what to do.
God bless you.
I work with numbers, so when you talk about.
We'll talk to the former mayor back there, Tony Fiori. He'll ta, he'll talk your ear off about members.
But, um, my, my concern is on our block that we have, and I don't know if this is the format for it, but we are getting some results, so this isn't out of negativity. This is just, we are, we don't really know what to do.
True.
Um, last year we were very excited with the pipes were installed on our, on our road. What are, I'm very bad at terminology, so what are things that go to the house and the big pipes? And I lived at my house twenty-five years. I've never had a problem with something being a house. And, um, and when the pipes were installed, we were happy to pave, we were happy, we was the pandemic, so we're happy to see men work on the highway and all that stuff. But one of the pipes broke and no one really wants to talk about this pipe broke. So we have a lot of flooding on, on our road, on our end of. I have two neighbors that are both in there for five years, forty-eight years, and they've never had problems. I'm the only one on that block that has basement where the flooding occurs. Everybody else is on a slab. So last month I paid fifteen thousand dollars for interior fresh streams because my basement is getting seepage from that pipe that's broken. Sewer drains overflow. I have pictures. We've, um, been communicating with Ian Ember. He's been wonderful. So kudos for him. Cause I called him one day. He came out an hour and a half later and met me and I showed everybody, like, we have mosquitoes. We have, woman has Lyme disease. I have Lyme disease. This is not good. Um, my house was smelly, so I had to get my basement done. I didn't have fifteen thousand to do this. I'd like to be a person. My other neighbor, his driveway, the water goes up to the house. The neighbor next to him, his property is all spongy. This last rainfall, the water went all the way to the neighbors behind us. So two houses down, behind them and over. Think of the cold and the cold. But, um, excuse me. But, um, it's a big problem and we're all, and we would like to get reimbursements of the money that was spent in to repair that insurance is not covered. Insurance will not cover my basement because it's seepage and it's not my fault that this happened. This happened a year ago, but now it's affecting all the homes.
Okay, Lois, so. No, no, I've not, I don't want you to leave yet. Um. Ted, hook up with, uh, is this New Jersey American Water, some of the, the, these repairs? I know it's not a repair, or a replacement.
Right, this was not a project. This was done by utility company like here.
Have a seat right there. Tom, bring that microphone over, over here if you can.
Well, I, I know I've spoken to Ian Ember about this. He's our, he's our superintendent of the division. He's been out there. I haven't been out there myself yet, although when it, when it rains next night, I want to get out there and see what, um. I've seen some pictures already. I know, uh, someone sent them to me. Maybe, maybe I'm right. So I want to get out there. I'm not really sure the cause of this problem. The drainage, it's, uh, he feel, he seems to feel it's not a broken, uh, clogged pipe, but.
What's interesting is, um, he said next week they're supposed to have a bunch of truck come.
Right.
My neighbor, that was two houses away. They're coming next week and then, um, but the thing is, there was a gentleman that came by about a month ago that was patching up the, the, um, sinkhole.
Right.
Say, and because all he has probably, you know, this was.
Which area?
One twenty-nine Maple Avenue.
All right, so Ted and Tony, can you both get Lois's contact information, um, and, and she'll, and don't take any photographs or any type of documentation that you want to provide to them, so long as you have copies of them. Um, and if not, we'll, we'll grab copies of those, Maureen, if, if that's okay. Uh, if you, if you don't have copies of them. Okay, so, so, um, let's just, uh, get out there and see what's, what's going on and, and get New Jersey American Water out there. Let's not let them pretend that it's not their problem.
And Ian's been helpful.
He works for us though.
Yeah, yeah.
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 But this is New Jersey American Water that, that installed this, this replacement. Yeah, it's, it's the main coming down, uh, coming down road. Yeah, all right. So, so, and, and Deputy Mayor Hybough actually brought this, uh, he, he told me that there was, there was issues that were happening and that Ian was going out there. So let, let's make sure we collect, uh, Lois's contact information to see, see what the right course of action is so we can help her and her neighbors out there.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thanks for coming tonight.
Okay, any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? In the room. I forgot to mention Sue Molzon, who is joining us now, the famous Molzons. Sue is joining us and just joined us a couple of weeks ago, I guess, right, in DPW. So Sue, welcome. All right, uh, going to WebEx. right, in DPW, so Sue, welcome. All right, going to WebEx. Okay, any member of the public wishing to make a public comment, joining us via WebEx?
Wait, we have.
Okay.
Yes, you there?
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Butler.
Yes, Joe Butler, one forty five Maple Avenue, I'm Lois's neighbor.
Oh.
Hi.
Hey, Lois.
Hey, Joe, she says hi.
I heard her.
Oh, okay.
Yes, yes. This has been an ongoing problem since the previous year, since last September, when the road was actually fixed and repaired the water line. The former, I guess, waterworks commissioner, whoever was in charge, fell through on fixing the problem the first time. We've had VAC trucks out here probably three weeks total in October, wasting township money, wasting my time of cleanup from the overflows. My yard gets inundated with garbage from Leonardville Road, running down the hill, all the way down to the house, into the driveways. I'm picking it up. I'm sweeping the driveway. I'll pick up the grass, the garbage bags, everything else that flows down the road. I got sinkholes behind my driveway. We want our third patch repair. Third patch repair. The sinkhole is about a five foot diameter, but five patches in four different spots. My storm drain is now cracking on the inside, and the slab is starting to fail. My property is like a sponge. I'm getting sinkholes in my property in the front of the driveway. My driveway is bubbling, because every rainstorm, no matter if it's a half inch or two inches, it overflows, and the pitch of the road is incorrect. So, my driveway is inundated with water, saturated for twenty hours at a time. Twenty hours. You know what happens to a blacktop when it's saturated with water? Blacktop cannot sustain water damage. It's not meant to hold water in. It washes all the oils out, so my driveway is starting to crack. Between the cracking in the driveway, the bubbling in the driveway, the sinking in my lawn, a foot of water running through my yard, every other storm, because we have two inches of rain, washing away grass seed, killing the rose bushes, blah, 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 you know the routine. And like I said, I got a five-year-old son. He plays in the road, not on purpose, but we ride our bike, we walk the dog. If he steps in that pothole and he gives out, what happens? He goes through. Who's getting sued? Township is. I had a cop come out two months ago for a pothole. I don't remember his name, but there's a police record of it, report made. He told me it's not a pothole. I'm sorry, a sinkhole. It's not a sinkhole. I said, "How is it not a sinkhole?" I could put my foot through the hole. The township sent out somebody in a truck to do pothole repair. They put in probably two yards of dirty stone into this hole, and covered it with blacktop. Two weeks later, it washed out. Two weeks later, it washed out again. Second repair again. I don't know how much blacktop he put in that time, how much dirty stone he filled it with, but it was over a yard. Two guys shoveling it, two hours, that's a good amount of shoveling. It's an ongoing problem, it's going to get worse. Somebody's going to get hurt. Township's going to suffer with a lawsuit. Taxpayers are going to be paying for that lawsuit because of neglect. Oh, besides that, I'm getting inundated with mosquitoes, because the storm drains don't drain, so I got tons and tons of mosquito larvae in the drains. Who wants mosquitoes in front of the house? Anybody? Nobody. Nobody wants to worry about mosquitoes. Why go outside and enjoy your house? You keep putting stuff down, it kills the mosquitoes, it washes away in two days because of a rainstorm. I want it on the record. I want it done, I want it fixed. I pay. Everybody else does.
Yeah, Mr. Butler, I'm going to ask, you know, I'm going to reiterate after Lois's comments, Tony and Ted, Ted and whoever you deem appropriate from DPW as well, let's get, you know, diagnose the problem out there, and let's coordinate with Mr. Butler and Lois, and anybody else from that neighborhood that's being impacted by.
I do have, I do have one question. I'm sorry to cut you off. When a road job, when the road job is done in Middletown Township, who inspects the road job? Does an engineer come out and inspect the road job while the repairs are being done? When the lines are being pressure tested, who signs off on that? Who inspects it when they put the pipe back in the road before they cover, to make sure the lines weren't damaged?
Well, it depends which project. This project in particular was done by the utility company, not by the town.
Correct, it was subcontracted, correct.
Well, they have, the water company has an engineer they have on site usually.
Okay, but when they did it, when they repaved the street, does the township, is it township road, or state road, or whose road is it?
It's a township road, yes.
How come it wasn't inspected properly for drainage, for the pitch?
It probably was by the utilities engineer, not by the township.
Not by the township, so they signed off on it. So, my question is this, if they have to dig the rope in front of the house again, are they going to repay it in front of my driveway and they get the correct pitch? Because the water, just even if the drains, if it's a light rainfall, the water pulls up in the front of my house and the road, and then washes into my driveway, because the angle is incorrect. It doesn't drain to the drain. It drains ten feet away from it.
We're going to have, Mr. Butler, we're going to have Tony, Tony from TAC, our township administrator, Ted Maloney, the director of our Public Works, out there and figure out what the problem is and what has to be done to correct it, and they're going to coordinate between you and Lois.
Yep, and I have plenty of photos also to document what's been going on from last year.
And all, and when they coordinate that, if you can provide those photos, that would be most appreciated.
Yes, I will.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. Any other member of the public wishing to make a public comment? Seeing no member of the public stepping forward, move to close the public portion and adjourn. Second, sorry, geez, thanks, guys.
Minnie McSeddon-Brida.
Yes.
Minnie Williams-Nell.
Yes.
Minnie McClark.
Yes. 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 Have a good night, everybody.